So, please call to order at seven, we'll start with the floor.
Plenipotentiary of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, let's welcome everyone to the July meeting of the Union Township Planning Commission. Um, roll call please.
Buckley was excused, Clerk Cody.
Here.
Darren was excused, LaBelle.
Here.
Milky?
Here.
Shingles?
Here.
Squatrito?
Here.
Webster?
Here.
And Fuller is present.
Thank you. Um, so minutes, we did meet on June nineteenth, that was our regular meeting. Are there any corrections to the June nineteenth meeting minutes? I thought they looked pretty good myself, but anything?
Motion to approve, uh, June nineteenth minutes.
Second.
So, motion was by Milky to approve the June nineteenth minutes as prepared. Uh, second was by Cody. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? So we have our minute- minutes, thank you.
I'd like to thank, uh, I'd like to thank our Vice Secretary, Mr. Darren, for his work and.
Yeah, picking up my slack.
He did a great job of putting these together.
Thank you. Um, correspondence slash board reports, um, any correspondence? Nope. Uh, board reports, anything from Board of Trustees?
We did approve the Mercantile Bank for the, at the last meeting, I think it was the last meeting.
The special use.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
That's all I know about.
Alright, thank you. Um, zoning Board of Appeals?
Uh, briefly, uh, at the last meeting, we had a variance request for barrier that's typically used, uh, to cordon off against residential areas from a business property. Um, and our zoning ordinance requires that it's a six-foot wall, Peter, right?
Six, five to eight.
Five to eight foot, uh, essentially brick and mortar wall. And that's how it's written in the, in the ordinance, um, but it's also described as the purpose of it is to shield view and noise from the business property on the residents that are nearby. And so we approved a variance for what you would call a newer technology wall, which is like a faux brick wall, um, actually much nicer to look at. Um, and so I think that the message from the ZBA on this is as we look at the ordinance again, this is something that we can look at as far as maybe be a little more flexible of what kind of barriers or shielding we can use. So that, that was the Holiday Inn, by the way, so when it goes up, we'll get to go see it.
Any questions for, I didn't ask solicit questions for Lisa, but any questions for either? Um, sidewalks and pathways?
Um, we met, um, of course we're short a member and, uh, our Chair wasn't there, but we, you know, there were three of us that met and we just kind of, you know, talked out about what we need to do next in regards to, uh, looking at waivers and then, uh, start to work on pathways.
Uh, and where we wish to, where that should be and what they should look like. Um, and then there is one under new business we're asking for the at-large, which you have
the application from prior.
Mm-hmm.
So, other than that, nothing else to report. I don't know when our next meeting will be, probably in August.
No, we're gonna try to schedule it this month, once we have the full board.
Ah. Okay. So that's all I got.
Okay. Any questions for, for sidewalks and pathways? Any other reports? Okay, thank you. Uh, so our agenda, we have an arduous agenda tonight. Anything, but is there, is there anything else that needs to be on tonight's agenda? People will have an opportunity for comment, but any other, any other items, specific items? Uh, is there a motion to approve the agenda as prepared?
It's a move.
Second.
So, motion is by Webster, second by LaBelle to approve our agenda as it stands. Further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so we have our agenda. Public comment, uh, at every meeting, we have a portion of the meeting at the beginning, relatively close to the beginning, where individuals are invited to address the Planning Commission on any item that's not on tonight's agenda. If anyone wishes to do so, we normally ask them to come to the table, which is either lacking a microphone or there's a new microphone that doesn't look like a microphone. Okay, there's a new microphone on the table that looks like a big mouse. Um, they, uh, come to the table, give us your name and address for the minutes and, uh, limit your comments to three minutes. Public comments open at seven oh five. And seeing none, we'll go ahead and close that back up. We'll have extended public comment later. Um, so we have a, a new business item. The sidewalks and pathways committee has a vacancy because one of the at-large members, uh, moved out of the township, I believe, and then therefore became ineligible. That was Barbara Anderson. Uh, she was in a term which was scheduled to expire eight fifteen of twenty nineteen. Uh, and in addition, the townships, the, uh, the Planning Commission's representative, Denise Webster, her term is scheduled to expire eight fifteen of twenty eighteen, uh, which is before we'll meet next. So, uh, the suggestion was that we look at appointments for both of those positions. Um, the at-large is listed first in the minute, so why don't we take that one first? That one is the one that's actually vacant right now, uh, because Barbara Anderson is gone. Uh, in your packets, there was one application, that application was part of the original set of applications that were submitted when we filled these positions last year. You might have noticed that, it was dated from twenty seventeen, but Peter has confirmed that the individual is still around and still interested. So, was your assumption that we would appoint, uh, the person to fulfill the remainder of that term through twenty eight fifteen nineteen?
That'd be correct.
Okay. So, it's really your pleasure, we can, we can make a nomination, we can make an appointment, we can have discussion if there are any concerns.
I would appoint her. And then knowing that, rather than running another ad and that could be weeks before we would get somebody who was even coming forward. So, if she has an interest in, I would, for one year, I would, I would appoint her. I'm not sure if I like your reasoning as to that one statement, but it's only, you know, we could, we could work with that for a year, realizing that it's only a one, it's only for one year.
Yeah, it was a rather brief, uh, application, but nevertheless, the, the.
I don't know, Connie Bill, Lee Bills or is it Bills?
Bills.
Bills? Um.
The prediagrist.
But I have no issue with, but I'll support her obviously, but I did have a resident contact me last week and ask, does Union Township have anything like a sidewalk pathway committee? Um, and I said, interesting enough, I'll bring that up at the next meeting. Um, and I don't know if, it was Matt Murts, I don't know if he contacted you today.
I didn't get anything.
I, I looked at, at this list and I said, you know, we do have another at-large or resident terms that'll be coming up. Um, I suggested to him to contact you, but apply for one of the later terms.
Right.
But I was glad to see somebody else interested in serving.
Well, the floor is open for nominations.
I'll make a motion to nominate Connie Bills for that term.
Support.
Okay, so the motion was by Cody with second by Milky to nominate, well, actually to appoint really, um, Connie Bills to the, uh, member at-large position on the sidewalks and pathways prioritization committee to fulfill the remainder of the term that is due to expire August fifteenth, twenty nineteen. Further discussion? Uh, all in favor of th- that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, she's appointed. And then, uh, the other one, as I mentioned, uh, the Planning Commission representative, that, that, uh, term is also expiring in, is expiring in this August, so, um, we can take action to, uh, make an appointment for the term that will commence when that term expires. And is that gonna be a one-year term or is that gonna go to a two-year term?
No, the initial term is a one-year and from now on, it'll be two years.
Okay. So that would be to a term that is expiring.
August of twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, alright. And likewise, the floor is open for nominations.
Denise, are you interested in doing it, continuing?
I, I, I'd be happy to continue, that's, that's the pleasure of the board. You know, if somebody else wants to do it, that's fine with me too. 'Cause I know that, you know.
Hmm. Well, you've clearly, you've clearly invested some time in getting to know this, the issues and the, the, the work at hand, so.
I'll nominate Denise Webster.
I'll second.
So, motion is by Fuller and second is by Cody to nominate Denise Webster as the Planning Commission representative to the sidewalks and pathways prioritization committee for a term ending, uh, eight fifteen twenty. Um, any discussion? Go ahead.
I just wanna say thank you.
You're welcome. I was, I was looking at my, you know, term here, I'm like, oh, that'll, this'll work.
That's what I was looking at too, and it, yes, it works.
I'm as, I'm assuming that the PC representative, what you were probably looking at and I looked at as well, is if your sidewalk term went longer than your PC term and you chose not to, or didn't come back to the PC that.
That I would, then come off. That's, yeah, okay.
Yeah, because that's the, specifically the Planning Commission representative, we would have to appoint a different person if you didn't, if you weren't still a Commissioner at that point. Other discussion? All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So, congratulations and thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Um, so that was our new business. Is there any other business that is, comes before us tonight? Yep, go ahead.
I don't know if it's appropriate, appropriate spot, but I just, uh, status on the, um, zoning agreement with, yeah, with.
Yeah, we've gone back and forth with, um, McKenna. I think we've reached a service agreement that we'll have ready for, uh, the Board of Trustees potentially approve next week.
Very good. Anything else? Um, then we'll move to extended public comment. This is the portion of the meeting where individuals are invited to address the Planning Commission on any item, whether it was on tonight's agenda or not. Just give us your name and address for the minutes and you get co- you get five minutes to, uh, comment publicly. Uh, extended public comment is open at seven thirteen. And seeing none, we'll go ahead and close that back up for another month. Final board comment, any comments from Commissioners?
I had a question, um, in regards to some of the, um, um, special use, um, um, you know, special use, whatever they were still called.
Permits?
Permits, thank you. And any other thing that we've approved, um, and I thought that was a special use permit that we did with the, uh, jump station? And it, and the only reason why I asked this is because I drive by this spot every day. And wasn't the special use to extend that? And are they going to extend it? Because then I see a lease sign.
Oh, and you're talking, not to be.
So, I'm just wondering, my comment is, um, any follow-up that we have as a board is, you know, are these approvals that we do actually happening? Does that really happen? Or does some people say, no, don't wanna do that anymore? Just kind of as a follow-up. And that was one I was thinking about, because there was no building, there's nothing going on there. And I thought we did that.
So the, just through a clarification, the, the jump station business that's on Brumfield Road, it's not a special use, it's a permitted use by right. If I remember, what you're referring to is the, um, vehicle sales that would be a special use.
No, 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 weren't we gonna connect one building with the other building?
There was a site plan to exten- expand that.
There was a site?
But there, that wasn't a special use.
Okay, so, I, I couldn't remember what it was. So, say it's a site plan, but they have a year to complete that, right? Site plan?
You have a, eh, the site, well, let me get you the exact wording.
I believe it's a year to start destruction.
And so, I, I haven't seen any activity. That's what, why I'm just curious, is like, you know, do we, do we ever get any follow-up of some of the things that we approve and, and whether that's, you know, something that we.
Well, we, we have had, um, site plans that never came to be, in reality, that, which is okay, I mean, if they choose not to boo, move, build it.
Right. Yes. It's, it is, it is okay, but I'm just like, okay, I mean, I don't drive around the township to look at all these sites, but this is, as a follow-up, it's just like, okay, are, are these things actually happening that we've, you know, discussed, approved, um, throughout the year? And that's the only reason why I asked that, because I could go by that place.
Now, the case of, correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, but in the case of a special use permit, if nothing was done for a year or two, we can review that on an annual, is it annual basis?
It, it, well, let me get the, the first question and then the second question.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay, and, and.
So, when it comes.
Right, the special use also is that automobile, it's like, okay, we did that too.
So, when it comes to the, um, a site plan, approval for a site plan shall expire after one year from the date of approval, unless a building permit has been issued and construction has commenced. For a special use, in instances where development authorized by a special use permit has not commenced within one year from the date of issuance, the permit may be reconsidered and/or voided at a regularly called meeting of the Planning Commission. So, the site plan after one year, it would expire, uh, one year from the date of issuance, um, development authorized by the special use may be reconsidered. It is an automatically, uh, void. Now, with the special use for the, uh, at the location, the parking was already there. It was spaces that were allocated, um, for, uh, the sale of motor vehicles and, and so on. So, um, in that sense, that special use is there with the land, whether it's used, not used, used, goes away, comes back used again, the parking is already there. Um, so if that helps with the special use.
Well, that, and, and the ju- I mean, the, you see a sign, spaces for leases, and those are the two instances that I, I just remember that, that locations, like, well, nothing seems to be happening there. It, and McGurk is gone, and so like, okay, so are we extending that jump station? Are we not doing that? Is, from that site plan, apparently these, this auto sales, apparently it's not happening? Uh, I, I guess, uh, since we look at these, I, as a follow-up is, yes, this is not happening or this basically is not happening.
My recollection, just to take them, I guess, one at a time, my recollection with respect to the auto sales was that it was actually a tenant of theirs that they were wanting to give some space to, but I think they were ultimately gonna do it in the building that's down, the new building down on Twanning, and so it probably became unnecessary once that was.
Well, okay, I, I might, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I'm asking is, do, we just don't have anything specific? I mean, is that, that they came in and say, no, this is not gonna happen and we've just updated, it was just an updating, rather than speculation.
So, so, so let's ask, so let's ask this question. If the, if the Planning Commission has the authority to revisit and potentially revoke a special use permit if it's not used within a certain period of time, is there a mechanism in place for us to be informed that that's happened?
Yeah, i- i- if the, but in this case, what I would argue with is, eh, where it states in instances where development authorized, the, the development was already there, is the parking. Uh, it's not a, it wasn't a vacant lot that, um, was undeveloped, uh, so if the special use is not used, uh, the property that, or the development, it was already developed, the parking was there, they were simply asking for the use to use the parking for sales. It can be used later on, it can be, it stays with the property. Um, for, I would argue that if the plan was, it was a vacant property, we'd like to put parking in there, uh, use it for sales, the parking never gets paved, nothing gets done a year later, then we could, uh, call a meeting to revoke it, but that's not this case.
Can you, can you reread that? You, you're saying that the ability to revoke is conditioned on some sort of actual development taking place?
Yeah, the, the, 'cause if the, eh, eh, as you guys know, eh, a special use, all special uses require a site plan. And so, if we approve a special use, for example, the, I'll give a recent example of the Mercantile Bank. We approved a site plan, we approved a special use for the bank with a drive-through. If within a year, no building permit is issued, no construction is commenced on that bank, then we would be able to, um, may be able to, um, at a regularly scheduled meeting reconsider or void that special use.
So if no sales, no, I guess it's the same instance, it's like, okay, there's no sales going on, there's no vehicles or any other motor vehicles that we approved that are parked in those spaces, you're saying that that can't be revoked?
I, I don't deem inactivity of the use as because it stays with the land, whether the use is used or not. The use could be dormant for ten years, and if someone still wants to use the property for that use, it stays with the property.
Trying to, your example of the bank and that. Okay.
Well, now, I suppose if the special use was tied to the site plan and the site plan, I mean, not maybe this instance, but if it's tied to a site plan and the site plan never gets, uh, invoked, and therefore goes away, then that site plan would go away with it, automatically, right?
Well, don't you vote on a special use prior to seeing the site plan?
But you could have a contingency that, right, upon approval of the site plan. I'm not saying it happened in this case, but I'm saying.
Right.
You, you could.
I'm wondering.
You could pass the site plan contingent on approval of the site plan, if the site plan becomes no longer valid because of inactivity of, to build, it seems like then the site plan or the s- special use become invalid as well. If that were a condition.
Right.
Can we put a condition on a special use like that?
Uh, you, you can put a condition on the special use that if the site plan is not.
We've done it before.
Approved, um, but once the site plan's approved, then that condition is met.
But the way you read it on the previous section was once the site plan, if it's not a building permit or construction's not occurred within one year, that site plan is revoked, therefore not approved.
Mm-hmm.
And then, so I'm just asking, in that case, it seems like the special use would go away with it.
Well, but the, the, this was a special use that was asked for once the parking already existed.
I, I wasn't speaking about the specific property, but since we were talking about this, that would be the case, right?
Yes, i- i- if we approved a site plan with a, uh, a special use and the site plan, mm, construction didn't commence within one year, no building permit, then we could, then the site plan would automatically be voided. We could reconsider voiding the special use permits. I just want everybody to be clear on that. One automatically rescinds, the others can be considered to be rescinded.
Unless there is contingent, the site plan was contingent on the site, special use was contingent on the site plan. That was my clarification. So if we approved a special use, contingent on the approval of the site plan, but the site plan never became reality because of no construction or permit, it seems like the special use would go away with the site.
Well, no, the, the site, the site plan would have been approved. It, it all would have been approved. So, we have a site plan, we have a special use.
Okay, I, I see how you're approaching it, yeah. I was just kinda curious.
Yeah, no, and, and so.
We're getting in the weeds here, I understand.
And, and my simple question was updates, and I just use that as an example, but we have done some other site plans and special use and have, they've all become a reality, um, in, in sense of what we've approved is, unless we would, I would, it was just an update, it's like, yes, this, this happened, uh, eh, um, I'm even thinking out on old Mission, uh, the auto. Um, a gentleman came in because he wanted to do something with, um.
Clint's Auto?
Yeah. Well, I don't go down to Mission, I, you guys, I, I just don't drive all around the, the township, um, and so did that actually, did something happen up there? Did he do what he did?
Yeah, I think he parked cars out there for sale.
Yeah, I believe, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, I guess just updates, especially as you get into some of these areas that, it's not a common route, um, unless, I, and I, I don't go down a lot of these roads on a regular basis. I, that was just the one that came to mind and it's like, oh, I wonder what the other ones are doing, updates. We don't do that? Uh, that's fine, I was just asking the question.
I would think the biggest thing would be that the building official is not gonna draw a permit if the site plan is expired because of inactivity on it, right?
Peter wouldn't sign up for the building permit.
Right.
Yeah, that, 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 yeah.
I mean, that, that would be the, the check that.
Sure. No, I, I'm not asking for that, it would be just an update, just to be informed. Not, not to question why that was done and look at it, it's just for information, but if that's not regularly done, then you can ignore my five minutes of asking.
I've never, I've never done that.
Okay, that's fine. I'm, I'm, I'm not.
I don't think it's a terrible idea, but it'd be one more thing for someone to do to prepare a report and, report back to us, but it might be interesting.
Yep, that's right.
I mean, it'd be, it'd be a good way for us to keep track of what's actually happened as opposed to just kind of passing these things through and then you only find out if you happen to drive by and see it.
That, or somebody comes in and makes a remark that they aren't happy, when it's like, okay, well, I don't, didn't even know that was happening.
Yeah.
This is for information, that, that was strictly.
I mean, probably easiest way to report something like that, Peter, would be building permits that are pulled off of site plans, right? That are given, rather than the reverse of saying, these things weren't done.
Yeah. That was more of a curiosity question, I guess. Thank you.
Thanks. Other, other comments? Yes?
We did update the camera system.
Yes.
Better speakers and now you can see the public speaking.
Hmm?
From both directions. So we got one both ways.
Oh, okay, I didn't even notice that one.
Yeah, so now you can see who's talking.
And there's one there too.
Yes.
Somebody's moving.
So, so does that mean you, you have three cameras actually? Just the two?
Just the two.
So the one in the corner is no longer active?
It's a redundancy for now.
Okay. Okay.
You can have better sound and everything, it's really nice.
So are they also mounted like that?
Yep, just those two.
Yep, we have two.
Oh, just those two, okay.
One so you can see the public or whoever's speaking and then one to see the board.
And so then, will you later edit and like decide which one you use or?
I'm doing that right now and, uh, it's, uh, being recorded, uh, onto, uh, hard disk and it's also being livestreamed on YouTube.
Woo!
Yes.
Are we gonna be live, are we gonna be live all the time?
I forgot to mention that one.
That's the intent, yes.
Okay.
That's exciting.
I forgot about that part.
Okay, interesting.
Yeah, we, you've always had to wait a few days to watch it.
Yeah.
Some of our residents do that.
So, do we have to now acknowledge Hazen as our executive producer now, or? So, we still, that's what it is. Before he was the cameraman, now he's, now he's producing, so...
We've never actually, like, rolled credits before, I mean, I guess we need to start doing that. Anything else? Going once, going twice, if not, then we've completed our agenda, so we'll stand in adjournment until our next meeting, which is scheduled for, uh, the third Tuesday in August right now. Thank you.
Okay.